Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, Mr. Benson is not here. Would the council like to make a motion to excuse him?
Move to excuse Councilman Benson.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I haven't heard from Mr. Benson yet tonight, but if he shows up, then we will do what we need to do to make the record right. I'd like to invite the audience to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, a good idea, Mr. Bullock. Please keep in your prayers and in your hearts all of the folks in France, in Paris, that were murdered over the last weekend. And the officers, the state patrols, officers' family that was killed over the weekend. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to ask the staff to pass the microphone around and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Kirk Hare.
Thank you.
Jamie Geeson.
Doug Hyman from IT.
Dan Beaver.
Dave McFarland.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Glenn Murray.
Dennis Moon, Police Department.
Roy Smith, Police Department.
Larry Holwig, Public Works.
Kelly Cable.
Martin McCray.
Donald Runcan.
Susan Runcan.
Abe Carson.
Steve Timms, Community Development.
Robin Curran's Planning.
Delilah Collins.
All right, thank you all for being here this evening. We'll start the agenda with the proclamation and recognition portion. We have the GIS Day proclamation. I'd like to invite any of our GIS staff present to come forward to the podium. Good evening. Mr. Gaylor, will you please read the proclamation? Do you have it, or do you want me to do it? All right, I'll read it. It's all right. Whereas this year has been declared International MAP Year by the International Cartographic Association as recognized by the United Nations, and whereas the National Geographic Society and other organizations annually promote Geography Awareness Week, which is designated as November 15th through November 21st this year, and whereas geography has played a defining role in the settlement, history, and cultural heritage of Commerce City and our nation, and whereas the management, use, and exchange of geographic information is essential for effective decision-making, and whereas geographic information systems, or GIS, technologies are a powerful tool for supporting emergency services and public safety, economic development, public works, parks, and community development, and whereas Commerce City is committed to using GIS technology to better serve residents and make geographic information easily available to the public. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City hereby declares November 18th, 2015, to be GIS Day, and encourages residents to take advantage of information available online. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed on the 16th day of November 2015, City of Commerce City, Colorado, Sean Ford, Mayor. Is there a motion? Mr. McElhany.
Move to approve the proclamation.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. To approve the proclamation is read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'd like to turn it over to the two of you. It's pretty, pretty great that they're starting to, to consider the mapping and all of this and, and recognize you all for the work that you do for the city.
We want to thank the council for supporting it and the community. I also invite you to take a look at the displays we have out in the lobby. They'll be there all week, and it demonstrates the many different uses that we do for, you know, GIS for the city and the citizens.
Great.
Thank you.
Does you have anything you wanted to say? No? Counsel. Does counsel have anything they want to say? Mr. McElhany.
I'll just add to the mayor's comments about the, the recognition of mapping. I don't know that when people hear the word GIS, it necessarily clicks for them what that means. For me, as a, as an elected official, these are invaluable tools for us to understand what are oftentimes very complex things in a very simple and visual way. And I don't think people necessarily understand how much goes into putting together a map and the different ways that you can use that data to draw insights about our community, to, you know, gain different views, and I, I have a great appreciation for what you do. It's not a job that I could sit down and do, but I certainly am a big fan of the end product and, and appreciate all that you guys do to help support our planning department and our legislative discussions and all of these things that leverage the work that, the work that you, you guys do. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Carson?
I was just going to also say thank you for what you do. Without people supplying me service such as mapping and MapQuest and navigation, I couldn't go anywhere. So, thank you, and, and I remember being a small child in school and looking at a map, and things just started to make sense if, once you could see that. So, thank you, and I, I can't imagine how much work it takes to, to keep this up, but thank you.
Mr. Amador.
And I want to echo what Jason and JD have said. It's one of those tools that we use, but most people don't know what it is and how to use it, or what it even entails to keep that database going. So, thank you.
I'd just like to add, you know, we use it daily. It helps us define our boundaries. Some roads were halfway annexed, some aren't. To be able to pull up Commerce City's GIS and even Adams County's GIS, to understand what's zoned what throughout the mapping, it has made planning, public works, economic development, all of our different departments, it has, it has lifted a burden of them having to go back to paper maps to try to define what's annexed, what's zoned, and what it's zoned. I think it's been great that we're able to get our GIS to the level that it's at now, and after being here for a long time and seeing that transition, it won't shock me if it changes drastically, and it just is improved that much more over the next few years. It's one of those growing devices that we have to use. So, thank you for everything you do, and the council's going to join me down front, and we'll give you this plaque.
Mayor Ford, I'd just like to add too, that it's not just the GIS department that does this, it's the entire departments that have specialists in their own departments that also help us out. So, thanks again.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move into citizen communication. Please give your name and address for the record, and keep your comments limited to 30 minutes, and I know, I'm sorry, three minutes. Sorry, I was trying to make it a long night tonight. I do know that we have a couple of hearings that are going to be coming up, and if you're here to speak on the hearing, and you've signed up for citizen communication, just let me know, and we'll let you have your chance to talk during citizen, during the, the public hearing. Let's see, Dan? Is it Beaver?
Yes.
Come on up. All right, that's all I needed to hear. Abe?
I, I thought you were just saying aye.
Okay, no. So, we'll, we'll make sure that you get heard during the, the public hearing.
I just want to make a couple of comments about the two subdivisions that are going in around Combine Ranches near Buffalo Run Golf Course.
I'm going to have to have you wait until we get to that portion of the meeting.
Yeah, okay, then I misunderstood what you were talking about.
All right? No problem. Thank you. All right, then we're covered on citizen communication. We will hear your testimony during the public hearings. So, I'll move on to approval of the minutes. We have the October 19th, 2015 minutes. I need a motion to allow Councilwoman Carson to abstain from voting on the minutes because of an excused absence. Mr. McElhany?
So moved.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow for the abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of October 19th. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve the minutes of October 19th, 2015?
And Mr. McElhany?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Mr. Gaylor? I'd like to make known for the record and remove the excused absence that Mr. Benson has joined us this evening. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there is only one item listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove this item off of the consent agenda for further discussion? Saying none. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Gaylor, you want to present that consent agenda?
The title of Resolution 2015-101, a resolution approving grant annexment to Park Creek Metropolitan District.
All right, thank you. Mr. McElhany?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, consent agenda is approved unanimously this evening. Next item is public hearings. We start with Resolution 2015-91/AN232-15/Z913-15. I'm going to open the public hearing. For any related annexation and zoning case, I'd like to invite Planner Paul Workman forward. I'd like to ask Attorney Gaylor to proceed with the annexation hearing.
Please raise your right hand and be sworn. The evidence you're about to give in the case now in hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Do you please state for the record your name and occupation?
My name is Paul Workman. I'm a planner with the City of Commerce City.
And are you familiar with the petition for annexation that has been filed in this case?
Yes, I am.
Okay, has the city council adopted a plan for the area proposed to be annexed pursuant to the requirements of state statute?
Yes, they have.
Is at least one-sixth of the perimeter of the area proposed to be annexed contiguous with the existing boundaries of the City of Commerce City?
Yes.
Does a community of interest exist between the city and the area proposed to be annexed?
Yes.
Is the area proposed to be annexed capable of being urbanized, or will it be urbanized in the near future?
Yes.
Is the area proposed to be annexed capable of being integrated, or has it been integrated with the City of Commerce City?
Yes.
Have all the owners of the land proposed to be annexed signed the petitions for annexation in this case?
Yes.
Have any annexation proceedings been initiated for this property by any other municipality?
No.
Would the proposed annexation result in detachment of an area from a school district and attachment to another school district?
No.
Does the annexation petition meet all of the requirements of the state statute?
Yes.
Will the proposed annexation have the effect of extending the existing boundaries of the City of Commerce City more than three miles in any one direction?
No.
Is the entire street or alley within the proposed area to be annexed included within the annexation?
Yes.
Have all the requirements of state law been met with regard to this proposed annexation?
Yes.
Are you aware of any reason why this annexation should not be granted?
No, sir, I am not.
That's all the questions I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Workman, will you go ahead and give your presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. As was previously referred to, there is two cases this evening. One is an annexation, and the other is the annexation zoning, zoning the property to be annexed. This is an application, a joint application between Commerce City and the Shell Oil Company. The properties for the request this evening are essentially three different areas. Area one is located at the northeast corner of Peoria Street and 96th Avenue. Area two is located at the 96th Avenue and Buckley Road alignment, and the third is a southern portion of right-of-way for 96th Avenue between Highway 2 and Buckley Road. The comprehensive plan for the city calls area one out for a public use, some residential development, and then open space, and area two is called out for future open space. This is an aerial of the subject properties. Currently, there is no development on either area. The purpose of these applications is to bring some of the last remaining Adco properties along the East 96th Avenue corridor between Highway 2 and Buckley Road into the city. It would potentially streamline future development of Shell's property, although there is no development proposed at this time, and then it brings city-owned property into the city's jurisdiction. Won't go through all of these, but these are detailed in the packet, but these are the approval criteria for, for annexation, very similar to what Mr. Gaylor and I were just, were just doing. The zoning request for area one, area one is a combination of city-owned property and property owned by the Shell Oil Company. The request is to zone the Commerce City property to a public designation and zone the Shell Oil Company property to an agricultural designation. In area two, that's entirely city-owned, and the city's requesting to rezone that to an agricultural designation. Annexation zonings are a little bit different than a traditional rezoning. There are three ways in which an annexation zoning can be approved. The first is that it's most compatible with the city's comprehensive plan. The second is that the zoning is most compatible with what is currently zoned in the county, and the third is that it's most compatible with the present use on the property. The request for area one, as previously mentioned, Commerce City is requesting to rezone that to public. It's the most compatible with our comprehensive plan designation as open space, as this site will be used as a current reservoir to help stormwater within the First Creek Basin. That meets criteria number one, as previously referred to. The Shell Oil Company property is being requested to be rezoned to an agricultural designation. That is the most compatible or comparable with the Adams County zoning currently. That meets criteria two, previously referenced. And the area two zoning compliance is the city requesting agricultural zoning, which again is most compatible to what's currently zoned in the county. In terms of public comment, staff has received two letters of support for this request. The DRT's recommendation would be to have city council vote to approve the annexation of the subject properties, and on October 6th, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval for the, for the zoning of the subject properties, subject to one condition, that condition being at the request of the city, they would dedicate right-of-way for Peoria Street and 96th Avenue at no expense to the city. That would conclude staff's presentation. However, we certainly are available for any questions council may have.
Does the council have any questions for staff at this time? Mr. Douglas?
Thank you very much. On those two proposed properties being annexed in the city, what about the mineral rights? Does Shell still have that?
That's correct.
Okay, so could this be future development as far as oil and gas?
My understanding is that there is a conservation easement on the subject property that would preclude that, but I would need to check that to be certain.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Saying none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this matter? Saying no one, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And I ask council if they'd like to discuss the matter. See any discussion? Saying none? I'm open for a motion to approve Resolution 2015-91. Mr. McElhany?
So moved.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title, title of Resolution 2015-91, Resolution Making Findings of Fact by the City Council of the City of Commerce City in its Conclusion Relative to Eligibility of Annexation to the City of Commerce City of the Property Located at the Southern Right-of-Way for East 96th Avenue Between State Highway 2 and Buckley Road, a Quarter Section of Land at the Northeast Corner of East 96th Avenue and Peoria Street, and a Small Portion of City-Owned Property at the Southwest Corner of East 96th Avenue and Buckley Road Alignment, Commerce City, Colorado, in AN232-15.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'm open for a motion to introduce ordinance AN-232-15. Mr. McElhany?
So moved.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney read the title, please?
Title of Ordinance AN232-15, An Ordinance Approving and Accomplishing the Annexation of Contiguous Unincorporated Territory Described and Exhibit A Attached Here To Made a Part Here Of Located at the Southern Right-of-Way for East 96th Avenue Between State Highway 2 and Buckley Road, a Quarter Section of Land at the Northeast Corner of East 96th Avenue and Peoria Street, and a Small Portion of City-Owned Property at the Southwest Corner of East 96th Avenue and Buckley Road Alignment, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, it's introduced unanimously by the council this evening. Now, I'm open for a motion to accept the findings, findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Zoning Ordinance Z-913-15. Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of Planning Commission on the Zoning Ordinance Z-913-15. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'm open for a motion to introduce the zoning ordinance Z-913-15. Mr. McElhany?
So moved.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title of Ordinance Z-913-15, An Ordinance Rezoning from Adams County Zoning of A3 to Commerce City Zoning of Public, The Property Described and Exhibit A Attached Here To Made a Part Here Of Located at the Northeast Corner of East 96th Avenue and Peoria Street, PIN Number 1721133000011, 172113300003, and PIN Number 1721113300004, in the Southwest Corner of East 96th Avenue and Buckley Road Alignment, PIN 172320100001, Commerce City, Colorado, and Amending the Zoning Map to the City of Commerce City, Colorado, to Reflect Said Rezoning.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, it's unanimous on the zoning. All right, next item, Z-928-15. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and invite Planner Paul Workman to present the case.
Thank you once again, Mr. Mayor. Now, we're going to move over to the west side of Peoria Street, north of 96th Avenue. This is zoning case Z-928-15. In this particular application, the City of Commerce City is the lone applicant, and the city's proposing to rezone the property from ag to a public designation in order to match the designation on the east side of Peoria Street. So, the property of the previous subject request was this kind of whitish box here, so we're going to go west side of the Peoria Street to this regularly shaped parcel here, currently zoned ag, currently annexed into the city, and owned by the city. Future land use map calls it out for a combination of open space with a slight sliver of commercial on the southern end. And again, this is the aerial of the subject property showing that there is no development on the site. This particular request is a city desire, is the city's desire to rezone the property to, again, match what's been done on the east side of Peoria Street. This is an additional component or piece of the future mall reservoir site, again, to help address stormwater issues in the First Creek Basin, and there are no imminent plans for development on the subject property. This is the approval criteria as stated from Planning Commission. I won't go through each of these, but Planning Commission did, did do the analysis and, and research and, and did determine that the request is compliant. In terms of public comment on this particular request, staff received one phone call today just requesting some additional information about the rezoning request. On October 6th, the Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval for the requested rezoning of this case, and that would conclude staff's presentation. However, we certainly are available for any additional questions.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions of staff at this time? Saying none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the city council on this matter? You just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Glenn Murray. I live several different places. 16550, East 116th Court is one. This property that you're talking about here was condemned by the Arsenal Shell Chemical because of the pollution, the water pollution through there, and that is where First Creek comes through, and I would hope that those issues have been looked at before, before something else, you know, if there is any pollution out there, it could be a problem.
Appreciate that. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Saying no one else, I would go to Mr. Workman. Can you address that comment?
The, the Arsenal, the Army is actively working to mitigate or mediate any leftover contamination. The contamination that was or is there is quite a bit underneath the ground level, and it's, it is what it is, essentially. There's not a...
There's not a, the rezoning of the subject property will not create additional liability or pollution or anything of that nature.
Yeah, that's where the plume drifted off the arsenal, and that plume's almost totally gone now from my understanding, and we would just be rezoning so it wouldn't increase any more risk. We already own it.
That's correct, and the public designation would also, you know, significantly, the public zoning designation along with the conservation easement significantly limits any development that will ever take place on the property.
Great, thank you. I'm going to go one more time. Anyone in the audience have any more questions or comments to the council on this case? Saying none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I'm going to ask the council if they'd like to discuss this case. Saying no discussion? I'm open for a motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Mr. Bullock.
So moved.
Mr. Amador.
Second.
Our motion is second. To approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I'll ask for a motion to introduce ordinance Z-928-15. Mr. Bullock.
Move to introduce ordinance Z-928-15.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Our motion is second with the attorneys, please read the title.
Title of ordinance Z-928-15 reads, "An Ordinance Rezoning from AG, Ag, to Public Zone District, The Property Described and Exhibit A Attached Here To Made a Part Hereof Located at the Northwest Corner of East 96th Avenue and Peoria Street, Commerce City, Colorado, and Amending the Zoning Map to the City of Commerce City, Colorado to Reflect Said Rezoning."
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. It's introduced unanimously by the council this evening. Now I'll move into Resolution 2015-112 and Resolution 2015-111. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on the two related cases. I'm going to invite Planner Robin Kearns forward to present the case.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me this evening. My name's Robin Kearns, with the Planning Department here to present subdivision case S-426 and 428, both ending in 04 and 015. These properties are located generally north of 112th Avenue, south and east of the public golf course, and west and north of Columbine Ranches. Its application is for the subdivision of residential property. Introducing this case, that these subdivisions are part of the Villages of Buffalo Run East PUD or Plan Unit Development. Filing six, otherwise known as Case S-428, is proposal for 138 lots for single-family residential development, and Case S-426 is for filing seven, and is proposed for 151 lots of residential, single-family construction. Both sites are currently undeveloped, and at this time, no builder has been identified for home construction. An aerial allows us to see these filings, six and seven, a little better in terms of their location, both in the PUD, which is outlined with the black hatching, and then in general, the larger area, 112th to the south, 120th to the north, Columbine Ranches to the southeast, and the golf course kind of that northwest. An entitled land use map helps see the context for these filings in terms of larger northern Commerce City range and overall kind of lot development and use, which is mostly suburban residential of low, medium, or high intensity. In this case, these filings are designated as a low residential. Some brief photos from the property. Here's filing six looking to the west, to the south, and to the east, and views from filing seven looking to the south, to the west, and to the east. Both filings share a similar north view, which would be over to some filings four and five. And to the bottom left, this photo is of, from 112th looking north, you're seeing the current golf course maintenance access road, which will be continued in the filing seven, but this is also generally the location of the drive that would enter into filing seven for vehicular access. There is a significant case history with these subdivisions. Originally, they were annexed in 1987 as part of, as Case AN 80 and 81, with their subsequent zoning Z-458 and 459. So in 1987, City Council approved for the annexation and the zoning of essentially the Buffalo Run Villages East PUD, and they approved a single-family development intensity of seven dwelling units to the acre. In 2001, this PUD was rezoned through City Council approval, and it approved these two filings, six and seven, with a minimum 1,000-foot square foot lots and 2,500 square foot two-story homes directly adjacent to the Columbine Ranches as caveats to the overall filings. In 2004, these plats were originally proposed, more or less as you see today, with some minor tweaks to access drives and the like, and those were started in 2004, but the cases did go dormant during the recession. This allows us to see these filings in terms of the overall PUD zone document, which highlights the location of access points and general, like, ability to fit in with the overall design. Coming now to see these requests, here's a close-up of filing six and a close-up filing seven, and when you put them together, you kind of see how they fit with access along filing six, sort of an east-west, ultimately connecting to High Plains Parkway, which is the southern extension of Buckley, and in filing seven, it's more of a north-south, ultimately connecting to 112th Avenue. Staff notes a difference between subdivision and zoning process. The zoning permits overall uses, bulk standards and design standards, while subdivision is about creating, if you will, the legal lots for transfer of ownership, meeting subdivision regulation, which includes, again, how the lots are created in terms of legal size, the street access, utility design, and the like. Planning Commission analysis looked at this applications and found that the subject plats had been reviewed against the Village of Buffalo Run East PUD document as well as the city's subdivision standards. This analysis included a look at traffic conditions. These plats are dedicating public roads and constructing them to the city's standards. There'll be connection to existing city road network through pre-established locations. Filing five to 112th Avenue and filing six will connect to the High Plains Parkway. There will be no access provided in the Columbine Ranches neighborhood. This impact to the overall network is expected, as our, the northern range was designed and the transportation network in the northern range was designed to adequately accommodate suburban residential such as this. The local residential roads, again, will connect to the larger road system of 112th Avenue and High Plains Parkway. The developer will be working with the city to construct their portions of arterial accesses, and the city does continue to work with the developers along 112th Avenue in a broader context for that road from chambers to essentially tower, and that process is ongoing and schedule is being determined. Helping council see the overall network of here in the northern range, see, High Plains Parkway is designated as a principal arterial, so this is some very large future road network that will be coming in, and 112th Avenue is designated as a multimodal arterial, so a pretty significant conduit. The analysis also included the evaluation of schools. This 27th school district has not objected to the requested plats. This PUD met the requirement for dedicated land for school sites, for residential lots, which would include these filings, and the residential builders in Villages Buffalo Run East are required, per the PUD, to pay into the capital facility fee foundation. The drainage was analyzed, there was a significant drainage study conducted when the PUD was first being created that accounts for essentially some of the regional stormwater that will flow through these sites, and ultimately, that water's being taken up to the north side of 120th, and there is a significant amount of this stormwater sewer network has already been installed. In terms of residential development, overall, the northern Commerce City is represented by suburban residential development, and this not accepting the Village of Buffalo Run East PUD, as I discussed earlier, it does dictate some very specific design requirements or zoning requirements for the lots in these filings. Specifically, they were allowed two to four units per acre, with requiring 10,000 square foot lots along Columbine Ranches, and that requirement was to help create a buffer between the larger Adams County lots and the smaller Commerce City lots to the west and north of the golf course. From our comprehensive plan, this subject area has, is called out for suburban residential, and the golf course have both been there since the 1990s in both the Newlands Comp Plan and the subsequent 2010 Comprehensive Plan. Staff notes project benefits of a subdivision like this. These two subdivisions plat, plat 289 lots, and these could be beneficial for the city in terms of signaling economic growth. It helps bring services when those kind of numbers of homes come in, which brings in future retailers, and it helps implement the city's vision for this area, which is in general a single-family detached home, especially around the golf course. This is reference, this is the subdivision review criteria used by staff and Planning Commission to look at these final plats. This is the code specific. And regarding public notification, as of today, staff has received five written responses to public notice. Of one, there was a letter with 68 signatures, and all of these responses have not been in favor of the subject applications. We've received one phone call from nearby properties concerned about traffic on 120th, and two requests for additional information at the front counter. Some public responses have been, numerous responses from individual folks, so those have been listed more or less as one response. On November 4th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted five to zero to recommend approval to the city council regarding both these requests. This concludes our presentation, and staff is available to answer any other questions, as well as, I believe, the applicant is here to answer some as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the council have any questions of staff at this time? Mr. McElhany.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. In terms of the comments, not in favor of this, of this matter, can you summarize for folks that have not had a chance to read the Planning Commission minutes, that may be watching, what the nature of those concerns was?
Sure. Generally speaking, the comments were about the lot sizes not being compatible to the larger Adams County lots that are recognized as the Columbine Ranches, which are, I believe, more like a two-acre lot, and again, these coming in around 10,000. So I guess mainly it's the nature of the residential development as being more dense than what's neighboring it, which is a much more rural, larger lot, and so that'd be concern, that's kind of the general concern. What else, what also brought this to hearing was concern about are there, are there the right pub, school facilities, or are there school facilities for this, which is one of the criteria for review, and that's ultimately what brought us to the hearing, because it is the ability of public who are notified within certain distances, and if they, if they bring up issues that are related to actual subdivision criteria review, we end up here. But most of the comments have been more about the nature of compatibility of this development to the neighboring Columbine Ranches.
Thank you for that. Just a follow-up question, in terms of the compatibility piece specifically, I know you cited in the presentation the dates that this was annexed in and the date of the PUD which set forth, at least at the high level, the intended uses of this. Do we have record of concerns from the adjoining properties at either of those major milestones in the past, or is this, because we're now at the point of subdivision, this is where the concerns are coming in?
No, absolutely, there is, this was discussed, and the applicant probably would do a better job than myself, but there were neighborhood meetings and public hearings involved, and I believe actually the original proposal was for 7,000 square foot lots, so ultimately, the developer raised the lot size up to 10,000 and also the homes to try to, to 2,500 square feet and two-story to try to address a concern. Again, they're coming from a place where a PUD was originally allowing them, I believe, seven units to the acre, so, but I think through that, those concerns is why we ended up with those very specific sizes next to the Columbine Ranches.
Okay, thank you. I think that's, that's helpful.
All right, Mr. Benson.
Well, that was part of the question that I had. I guess the next question is, does this letter that we got from School District 27J have any impact on this property?
You're referring to the letter recently received? I missed the first part of your statements.
One that's dated November 16th. Does it have any impact on what we're doing here?
No, no. It doesn't from staff's perspective. They're not really saying in that letter whether they approve or, or, you know, support or don't support. They're stating some numbers about number of units, and basically highlighting that fees are paid towards school facilities and, and basically, the development agreement done at the time with this PUD addressed those issues in terms of land dedication and the like. So I think it's between, I think, a turn, city attorney evaluation is that this PUD has met their, their school dedication.
And all of this area is covered by a PUD?
Correct. Villages Buffalo Run East.
Right, so it was shown on the PUD that there would be two-acre lots here, and right next door there would be 10,000-foot, square foot lots?
The PUD does not include any two-acre lots.
It doesn't. So how big would the Buffalo Ranch lots be? Is that what is called Buffalo Ranches? I thought you said that.
Columbine Ranches.
The existing Columbine Ranches are approximately two-acre lots.
That's unincorporated.
That is unincorporated. This map helps sort of visualize the context. You can see the, the lot size is dramatically larger than most.
That's that horse property over there where they, they have their own water and everything in it.
I believe, yeah, there's, there's sort of agricultural lots, larger with horses or the like.
They're, they're the ones that are objecting.
Correct.
All right, okay. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Carson.
I just have a few more questions. I guess it's not clear to me how this letter from School District 27J does not impact this. When I read this, and maybe I am not clear in my understanding, is that we don't have any place to put students if we increase the growth up there in this area, that, as everybody well knows, we just came off of a hard-fought campaign to add to our schools because they are so overcrowded. I do believe that it is our responsibility as the city that we proactively I do believe that it is our responsibility as the city that we proactively understand that we're not building a quality community if we can't provide schools and education for our children. So I am quite concerned when I read this letter that the land that was dedicated has reverted back to the original developer with the refusal to go back and re-figure this. And I am reading in the last paragraph here that the school district hoped that it would bring conversations between the developer of the city and the school district. And I would also hope that because I don't know how responsibly I can set up here and approve to bring more homes with more families, even though I want to continue that growth. I am very concerned for the education and we cannot keep putting children in these overcrowded schools. So I would like to see this conversation happen with the school district, the city, and the developers to figure out how do we responsibly go forward with this.
Sure, absolutely. I think that makes a lot of sense. The place I mean might be more appropriate is on conversations related to the PUD itself where that kind of language exists. Regarding the timeline, there's currently that park school site is under, will be under construction. It's been approved for the park part of it, leaving a remainder of, I believe, five acres for the school. And that Sunset Clause has a ways to still, until it's actually reached. So it has not actually reverted and probably be some years before it does. And that would be if nothing does change in the interim in terms of that language. But at the, that language probably be a little more appropriate to be discussed at a, like a zoning review versus the plat. But that's, that's just a thought from staff.
Mr. Gaylor? You want to explain the letter? Because I'm sure everybody in the audience is wondering, what's this letter say? People at home are probably wondering. Explain what the letter is talking about.
This is a letter that was, that's dated November 16, 2015, from the school district to the city. And the letter addresses Villages at Buffalo Run East, which is the subdivision issue that is before the city this evening. The letter begins by reviewing the history for the particular property. And it talks about originally this property was zoned in 2001 with a plat that indicated 874 residential lots. And at that time, there was an agreement that, as required by the city ordinances, that land be dedicated for school district purposes. And in lieu thereof, cash could be paid for dedication of the land, in lieu of the dedication of the land. In fact, then an agreement was reached where the developers did in fact dedicate five acres of the site. And that's, that area was to be then developed as a park site. And the balance that was computed for money, $283,000, was then paid by the developer for satisfaction of the requirement that cash in lieu be paid. Along with that agreement, there was a requirement that the land for the school site then be dedicated by 2010 or when 80% of the subject property was approved for single-family residential lots and then was sold to third-party purchasers. That had not yet happened as of 2010. So in reading that agreement, in 2010, that property was to be used for construction of a school site. That construction did not take place. And then in reading the agreement then, the property was available then for reversion back to the developer if the school site were not dedicated or were not actually dedicated and built on. Bringing this forward then, what the, what the school district has said that is that any significant changes to the Villages at Buffalo Run East PUD that would result in additional student generation, then conversation should take place between the developer, the city, and the school district to increase the land dedication requirements and/or the cash in lieu requirements. Now, the fact remains that the PUD is in place now. And that sets forth the requirements for development on that property, the residential development. That's an entitlement of the developer. What the school district is saying is that if there is any increase in the future for development that would generate additional students beyond what the PUD allowed for, then there needs to be further discussions between the district and the school district and the city of Commerce City and the developer. I think the city stands by that requirement because under our present ordinance, if there is to be a PUD zoning, or any type of zoning that would generate residential development, there would be that requirement that developer has to meet. And that is speaking for any future PUD zoning in the city. And if there is to be any future PUD zoning in the district by this developer or any developer, then the school district issues need to be addressed.
Go ahead and continue.
If I'm reading correctly, though, it also states that it is highly unlikely there will not be a dedicated school site to serve students located in this area.
Now, that's for this present PUD. The reason being is that because under the present PUD, that requirement was already met. The agreement was reached that if there was not a school site built by that date, then there'd be an entitlement to a reversion. But the money was paid as required. It was just that portion of the agreement was not fulfilled and therefore no school was built. And therefore, there's not a legal requirement for the reversion of the land. Now, that's not to say that any future development that would generate additional development for residential purposes would not have to address the statutory requirement that we have in our city for dedicating additional land for the school. But that sentence that you're referring to, when it's talking about this present development, that requirement has already been agreed upon and the time has passed for compliance with that requirement. The last paragraph talks about any future PUD zoning, which I understand there is certainly that likelihood there will be future PUD zoning that would have to comply with the school district request.
So, Mr. Gaylor, how is it that we work together with this problem so that we don't end up with a huge development with families and we don't have any place to put these students for an education?
I would say that discussion needs to take place with the developer. And that is an issue that can and should be resolved outside the subdivision proceeding that is before you this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Amador.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Attorney. So I think what I heard you say is that there was a provision in the existing agreement for a sum of dollars. And that sum of dollars was paid to the school district and fulfilled that requirement. I would imagine that the condition of that would be with the existing PUD and the density. And so what I'm hearing you say now is that now that that provision has passed, that the developer is coming back to amend the PUD with a higher density, which would further impact the school district. Is that what I heard?
Not on this particular site. This evening, we're just talking about subdivision. The PUD is approved and that's in place and that's not before us this evening. That's the rezoning. Now, another parcel that doesn't involve this application may be forthcoming. And when that is forthcoming, then of course, those requirements would have to be complied with starting all over again, such as they were addressed back in 2001.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes, thank you. So the PUD in question following number six and seven, that would create a new impact for our schools, correct? If it's approved.
Mr. McBrough.
If I might answer, what's being proposed is plating according to the originally approved PUD. Mr. Kearns mentioned the lot sizes were increased a bit since the original PUD was approved. But the developer is not requesting through these two Platts to increase density or increase the number of lots that are going to be developed. What's being platted is in keeping with the zoning that was originally approved.
Okay. Because I know that since this last, two weeks ago, it just approved the passing of C3 and then it's going to be the future build of elementary school number 12. Now, that developer dedicated land for the impact that the homes are going to be built in reunion. It has nothing to do with following six or seven. And then I know back, back last year, March of 2014, we had a discussion about the future parks for the city based off of 2013 1% sales tax that passed. So upon that, we were told that the city, since that was dedicated for a park for future built-out, which was approved, that the other part was already dedicated for future schools and that there was a talk underway that was, that I understood, there's agreement that the developer was willing to go ahead and let the school move forward even though nothing was built in 2010. Nothing was brought forward to us since then to indicate that something was different until this letter tonight. So my understanding was that there was an agreement last year that a future school site would be built on that property and that the developer was agreed, had agreed to keep that agreement in place. But this letter tonight does not, does indicate that that's not the case.
Well, you are right. There is an agreement in place. It's my understanding the school district has title to that five acres. However, because of the terms of that agreement in 2001, there is this reversion clause that allows the developer to take that five acres back. But as we sit here tonight, the school district owns that property. But again, there are provisions that would allow the developer to take that five acres back if the school district doesn't perform under the terms of that 2001 contract.
Okay. The other question about Columbine Ranch, how many homes are in that subdivision? Is it 48, 53?
I could count the lots for you if you'd like.
Okay. So maybe if you had that on hand, but go ahead.
It's a little hard to tell.
Okay. And what's the average square footage of those homes in Columbine Ranch? Do you know that?
I'm not aware, no.
Okay. Do we have record of that as far as they're falling and what the average square footage of those homes?
I could go into the Adams County Assessor site and do some research.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. McAdonie.
Thank you. Some of the questions ahead have been asked, but I want to add a clarification. So, Mr. City Attorney, in reading or highlighting the district, the school district's letter, they speak to an anticipated number of students to be generated by the development. And that was the number that was used to arrive at the land and fee in lieu that was agreed to that we've been talking about. They also talk later in the letter about anything that might result in increases to those projections being caused to trigger the conversations that we've also talked about. I want to make sure we're not knitting too many things together. I think there are some very fine lines here that we're trying to get our head around. Clearly, A, everybody is concerned and rightly so about the school impacts. And having just spent what seems like the last two years of my life helping advocate for the recent bond measure, I'm clearly all about making sure that that's accounted for. That said, despite where we, I mean, where we are today, we have to look at, within certain confines, this conversation, right? And I think what I'm trying to get to is, maybe this is a question for you, Mr. Attorney, how do we put a more clear box around tonight's conversation? And what of these other facts do and don't, should or should not have bearing on tonight's decision, right? Because the other thing that I've heard is there are or would be subsequent conversations that are quote-unquote "more appropriate" or technically tied to a series of conversations and decision points that are, trigger around PUD and zoning. And those would trigger, just like they did in the beginning, a conversation and a necessary agreement on how to address the school capacity question, right? Does that make sense so far?
Yes.
I think another way of asking Mr. Gaylor that question would be for Mr. Gaylor to summarize what discretion the city council has with respect to subdivision Platts.
Correct.
The discretion that we've been referring to regarding the school district would apply if the zoning is being changed. And what's confusing about this letter is the developer is considering a request to change the zoning on some different property that they own that's not on your agenda tonight. So tonight, maybe the question for Mr. Gaylor is what discretion does City Council have with the requests that are on tonight's agenda?
Sometimes it gets confusing to distinguish zoning cases from subdivision cases. When you talk about zoning cases, the city council has much more discretion and authority as to the uses that can be placed on that property. Because when you talk about zoning, you talk about size of lots, you talk about the uses that can be put on those lots, such as residential versus commercial. You talk about the types of residential development that can go in those lots, whether it's attached or detached, multifamily, single-family. Those issues are all zoning issues that come up in a PUD zone case. Now, when you talk about a subdivision case, there the criteria is much more limited because now you're talking about not the type of use that can go on the property because that's already decided when you have a zoning case. When you talk about a subdivision, you talk about placement of roads, you talk about placement of lots, not size of lots. Because that's, if that's in the PUD document, which it usually is, then that's already been decided. A subdivision doesn't change what a PUD has already granted. So basically, in a subdivision case, you're So basically, in a subdivision case, you're talking about location of the roads, access into the property, and you talk about the number of lots that are allowed, but you can't be changing the size of the lots if the PUD already granted the size of the lots. So your discretion is much more limited in a subdivision case than it is in a zoning case.
Thank you for that. So to restate yet again, what I think that means in the context of this conversation is that prior agreement on the PUD for this area set the size and as a result, the number of lots that could be in these two filings. Done, right?
Is that right?
And, and we heard from Mr. Kearns that part of that PUD was a concession by the developer to adjust the lot size, right, committing to a lot size adjustment for the properties that have butted Columbine Ranches on the north and the west boundary to create a transition from the existing large lots in the county property to what will be higher density in the city area, right? So that's not for us to discuss tonight, right?
The third item that we've been discussing tonight that was resolved as part of that original PUD zoning was the school site dedication and the fee and lieu.
Right.
So that was resolved and agreed upon at the time the PUD was originally approved in 2001 as well.
And that was my next point. And the key with that is there is, there is a complicating factor, right? We are, we are aware of the fact that this precision component exists, but as of today, right now, as we sit here to make this decision, it has not been affected, right? So if the school district next week chose to proceed with building a school, that land is still there for them to do that under the current outline. Am I correct?
Correct.
So we have to make our decision tonight based on the facts that are in place right this minute. And I want to make sure I have a clear sense of what those facts are because if, for example, the, that property was no longer on the table at all, it's a different conversation and it's an unfortunate conversation because we're, we're at a point where, you know, you could argue the parties to those, that agreement at the time weren't thinking far enough ahead, right? So, but we can't, we're not here, in my understanding, to debate that decision at that time, right? So it gets down to, do we approve these subdivision, do we approve the subdivision case or not, right? And, and what are the handful of factors that we can, you know, be considering that would cause us to disapprove these lots?
You wouldn't bring up that slide? You had, the planning department has a slide.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have folks see that once again, just to get us back to...
We were talking about that review criteria?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's important, given the subject that, I know we, we put this on screen, but I think we need to step through this just to help re-center us. So if you can just talk to us about A through Y?
Absolutely. So in reviewing the final plats, these are, this is our review criteria. A is discussing that this plat be consistent with the zoning concept plan or PUD zone document.
And I'm sorry, if I can just add, so as we talk about these, will you speak to how?
Sure.
Right?
Sure. So again, that's where we, we're at this 10, when you look at the plat, you'd see 10,000 square foot lots along Columbine Ranches. You'd see there, there's minimums of 8,000 along the golf course, so those are all 8,000. The, some of the, yeah, mainly that's a lot of the size. And also goes into the, the road network, kind of how that was originally laid out.
But the key, if I can, is that there's nothing in the current subdivision case that is in conflict with the approved zoning, concept plan, or PUD zone document, correct?
Correct.
And therefore, A is crossed off the list. So this is what I want to make sure we're all clear on, so...
And staff notes that during our review, we did receive, and it would be in your packet, a referral response from 27J School District highlighting the issues that the school district is certainly having in terms of number of students and capacity, but not, you know, not suggesting that these subdivisions be denied, just stating that those, that's some of the issues that the school districts face, but that's in the packet.
And I guess to that point, that would have been an available option for the district to state their opposition to this subdivision case based on those criteria, right?
Correct. That would have been the most appropriate moment was when we were originally referring it for those responses.
And they did not submit any such comments?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks. If you can, are there any others here that you think are, weren't zeroing in on or, I mean, I'm, I'm asking this for myself and for all of us and to make sure that the public watching is clear on it. If you guys are okay with having Robin continue down the list, does that make sense?
Correct.
Thanks for humoring me.
I'd be happy to go.
Okay, thanks. Okay.
Mr. Bullard?
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. You know, when this was originally platted, it was platted for 874 lots for the Village of Buffalo Run East, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that's the whole development. This plat, where we're, the two plats that we're looking at tonight are for 289 units. Out of the 874 units, with the 289 we have tonight, how many more platted units are there or are we at capacity now or how many more do we have? Mr. Kearns, can you answer that?
In terms of exact number of units, so this, these two filings really represent the last, large filings of single-family platted development in the Buffalo Run Villages East. There's some commercial filings, some residential, high or higher-density multifamily-type filings. In terms of single-family lots, these are the last filings. The rest are either built or under construction.
Okay. Would these two filings get us up to 874 units of single-family residential units?
And that number's coming from the school district letter, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Staff wasn't quite sure that that's exactly the right number of units where they cited their numbers from, but it'd be close. And yes, this would bring, these filings would be the last total numbers. If you were looking at a total single-family lot development in Buffalo Run East, these two filings represent the last single-family lot development. That would totally, some total number. And I think 879 is not quite right, but it's close.
I know it isn't right because I was here when we did this back in 2001. And then when they revised it to bump up against Columbine and they built the bigger lots, they lost a lot of the lots that they had platted because instead of a 10,000-foot lots next to the other development, cut out a lot of lots. So it is no longer at any way 874 lots, but I don't know how many it is right now, but I know it's, I can't say far less than 874, but I know that it's a lot less than 874 for the whole Village of Buffalo Run East, you know?
And that, that's correct. You made a good point that the, the changing of the lot sizes did affect number of lots. The, it's a little complicated in terms of the development agreement actually also incorporates the Buffalo Run Villages West. And that's approximately a little less than 500 lots west of Chambers. Sometimes when we're looking at total lot count and how it could even affect like the school revision, it incorporates also another area. So it gets a little confusing in terms of total filings.
Okay, thank you.
But you're correct.
And some of these questions you may ask to the applicant. I'll be calling him up next. And he would probably knows, know those numbers. All right, Councilman Carson?
I do have one more question and it's on G. It says sufficient public services and uses are available to serve the subject property and schools is listed there. Do we have sufficient schools to serve that?
One would assume so as they did not offer, during comment, a response that, that recommended declining the, or not approving the subdivisions.
And I know we get in trouble when we speak for others and they don't speak for themselves. It, it, in my opinion, puts the school district in a, a tough place to be, to come in and oppose growth. So I'm kind of reading this letter as the school district is trying to not oppose all future growth, but they're trying to affect how we go about with future growth with, with the consideration of, of how do we? So when this says subdivision review criteria, the only criteria that meets is they didn't oppose it, so that tells us we have sufficient? Is that, am I understanding if there's no opposition from the school district, we just assume then that we can serve those needs?
I don't know about assumption. We specifically refer to them for their referral response and received a referral response that specifically did not recommend declining these subdivisions.
So my understanding is, is then the school district actually would have to speak up and actually oppose growth if they really do feel they cannot serve these needs?
Yes. I believe that they, on subdivision filings, that there have been letters from the school district that recommended not, denying the subdivisions because of those issues.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the staff at this time? Seeing none, I'd like to ask the applicant if he'd like to come forward and provide any further testimony. State's name and address for the record, please.
Mark Bush, 905 West 124th Avenue, Westminster, 80304, or 80234, excuse me. Mayor, council members, thank you for your time tonight, particularly on a first wintry night of the year. Robin was, put up an aerial of the project, I guess really to two things. I'm certainly here to answer any questions you have, but I thought I might just take a few of your minutes here to, to just give a little bit more background on the property. The Villages of Buffalo Run consists of that half section of ground, I got my little laser here, a half section of ground as well as this quarter section. And Robin was referring to the Villages of Buffalo Run West, which is over here, which consists of about 417 houses. Just to, to get on the topic that, that most people are focused on, the genesis of that 2000 agreement with the city where we dedicated the 14 acres there that's to serve as a 14-acre school site as well as a park was all part of a conversation we were having with the city relative to our construction. We built and paid for Stampede Park over there, which is a city park, 13 acres. Our ownership also too, some of you, I'm sure you know, our ownership was also very early on in the 90s, working with the city and dedicated, we actually have quite a bit of public land dedication in our project. We dedicated the ground for the golf course and we're, us with the Fulham Wyder property, which is now Reunion, came forward and worked with the city in partnership in getting the golf course built, dedicating the land for the project. So there was a large public land dedication day one in the project that, that our ownership in this project did. When the project was annexed into the city, I think it was in 97, right? It came off an Adams County PUD that was zoned at seven units to the acre. The PUD that we annexed under put a density of seven units to the acre throughout the property. I'd just like to comment on the lot sizes here on six and seven. It was never thought that this would be a rural subdivision in the area. It was always thought to be a suburban subdivision-type development. What we've done in our project is we put, introduced, really for kind of the, the strong planning principles of a PUD is we have a diversity of product type. We have multifamily up here as well as, right here we have multifamily. We have what I would call smaller lots. These are more, they're 5,000 square foot lots. These are more in those 7,000 to 8,000 square foot and we have multifamily down here in the corner of 112th. We have single-family within the area here. And six and seven have always been kind of meant to be our larger lot, kind of premium lots in our subdivision. We're excited to bring those to the market here in Commerce City up in the area. We think there's a expanding kind of move-up market that's hit, coming to the area there. So there, there's a lot of history with the PUD, there's a lot of history with partnership working with the city, myriad of issues, Chambers Road, obviously the golf course. We're working with the city on 112th, working with the city on High Plains Parkway up here as well as this intersection redesign. So in 2001, when we did the PUD, went through an extensive vetting process, we worked on it with staff for well over a year and a half. We had public meetings, neighborhood meetings here in the council, went through Planning Commission, went through city council. And that's when it was determined what size and what the land uses would be in the different areas of the PUD. You know, we, we think we have a good working partnership with, with 27J. We're really, we're supportive of the bond issue, always had in a conversation with them also to addressing the school issues. But other than that, I thought staff did a great job of presenting, presenting the project.
Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bush, for clarifying that. And I know you've been a, a good property owner as far as keeping your property, cutting all that and complying. You know, we get, I get hit up a lot of growth and controlling that growth and then making sure the schools have adequate space for the homes that are built.
Right.
And, you know, we really don't have any control over that. We just had a huge outburst of residential growth and schools did not keep up. So that's why we're going through these bonds and people look at taxes going up and vote no, not knowing how things work. There was a big effort to campaign to really look at not catching up, but at least trying to stay not too far behind of development. So my concern is, you know, I know we're not here tonight, it's about the schools and all.
Right.
But since you are the property owner here, you know, keeping that conversation going with 27J because they're not here and it kind of puts me at a point, and it's just me talking, and to approve this, I would say I would like to hold off until they're here for 27J. But we're not, you know, they had opportunity to be here and they're not here.
Yeah, no, I, I, excuse me, sorry.
So that's my concern and I know we're, we're talking about approving these filings and the zoning and all, not what type of homes are going to go on the lots, not what the aesthetics, the fence and all that, but for the zoning approval.
Correct.
The PUD, okay? So, because this is the first time something like this has come before council. And so there's going to be many steps, you know, in order to get to the end goal. So this is not the first hearing, or public hearing we're going to have on this because there's more steps to come. So... So, yeah, my concern is, not only in suggesting property, but as far as the talk with the schools and you being a property owner, you know, continuing that talk because they are impacted and this bond going forward, improve, future capital improvement projects, but not what's noted there on your property.
Right. And I just ask you to, we talked about the school site and the 14 acres there, that was an agreement that was negotiated back in 2000 and that settlement or what we came to conclusions on in terms of the school site was part of other things that were also part of that agreement. So it wasn't a, simply an isolated issue out there. It was done in the context of, as I said before, construction of Stampede Park. There's obligations for us to build some improvements over on the Spear Canal there for public access to what will ultimately be a regional trail. So there's four or five what I would call kind of bonus items in that agreement. And, you know, I've talked with, with Jim and Brian about it a bit and it's certainly on the table, but we're very conscious of the, of 27J's efforts. And I also think that, maybe this might be the, be the audience for philosophical talk about it, but development is kind of a catch-up game. I think you put that very well, but if you look at the changing demographic with the new growth that's occurring up in that area of Commerce City, pretty incredible how the vote went this year as opposed to what it did a year ago.
Right.
I think that's a reflection of the change in the area and the change in the demographic. You know, people are concerned about it and there's a lot of young families up in that area.
Exactly. Because I think also people's perception is that schools will be built there and it's not. That wasn't part of this. not, that, that wasn't part of this, this bond.
Yeah. The reverse agreement came down, it was a surprise for everybody, we hadn't looked at the agreement in a number of years, but it's on everybody's desk and it's, it's part of the conversation.
Right. So, I, I know it's not part of our talk tonight, but just to keep that in, in the back of your mind. That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Is there any other questions of the applicant? JD?
Mr. Bush, thank you for coming in and hopefully you're not feeling that we're beating you up.
I feel that way at all, no.
I will tell you though, I am very concerned. I moved into my house in 01. At that time, our elementary school was just built, it was housing K through 8. What has changed in over those years is we had a high school built, a middle school built, everything is over capacity, kids are on split sessions, families will tell you students, students do not get much. There's a lot of things that are happening to our students because of this. So, do I believe developers play a huge role in this? I do. And I think it is a different day and I think it is time that instead of just looking that we're going to build houses, that we as cities and communities try to figure out how do we continue building communities. This council stood behind the resolution to support 3C because as every, everyone's setting on this council understands, it affects economic growth within our city. You cannot have responsible, good growth in your city if you cannot supply education to the students who live here. So, my understanding is, is that you're within full realm of everything that was supposed to happen here, so you're within your rights. My statement is, is that I do believe things need to change, and I do believe that developers need to start looking, that they are more responsible, that when you build these homes, that you have built a community and a place where families can thrive and grow, not, not to where families are going to start moving out of our city, because I will tell you, over the last two years, I have heard a lot of that conversation up north, that people were going to move, and people were very serious that if 3C did not pass, they would move. If I had a young family, I can tell you right now, I would not move into this community with the idea that my children were going to go under split sessions and that there still is a possibility that the children in this school district will go under track schooling. So, it, it's very hard for me not to set up here and truly feel like I'm going to oppose all future growth until we have that proactive conversation of how do we assure that, that we continue to supply good quality education for our children because the way these high schoolers are attending school, in my opinion, is, is the best a school district could provide, but it's not what I call quality.
We, we share similar sentiments.
Anyone else have any comments for the applicant?
You know, I would just, just add that, I think you put it, I thought you summed it up very well, where these filings, six and seven, have been in place, you know, as Robin pointed on the, on the presentation, since 2004. It's exactly to what the PUD requirements are, and we're just executing really on that.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Now, and I know the answer to this, is there anyone in the audience that would like to just come up and testify? We need to do this in a ruly fashion, so what I'll do is I'll call you each up. If the guy before you said what you want to say, you can say, I agree with what that person said. If you have new testimony, we'll take the new testimony. I just don't want everybody to say exactly the same thing, but you all will have a chance to speak. So, we'll start on the right side of the room, since there's fewer, and we'll work our way to the left, my right, my left. Gentlemen in the blue, did you have something you wanted to come up and talk about? Need you to state your name and address for the record.
Dan Beaver, 11598 Nukla. I live in Columbine Ranches. I have a couple of comments and item G on that board where we were, that was listed up there. We do not have the infrastructure necessary to support this subdivision. Filing number seven, I believe it is, will dump all of the traffic out onto 112th. There is, it is a two-lane gravel road. There is no traffic light at Chambers, there's also no traffic light at Tower, okay? So, any of the traffic that's in that subdivision, and we're talking close to 300 cars, if you use the national average for households, how many cars they have, it's about 300 cars that are going to be on that road. We don't, we don't have asphalt, we don't even have a, we have a two-lane gravel road with no traffic lights at either end. You, you talk about schools. I supported, I voted for that. I don't live in Commerce City, but I voted for it because I saw the importance for the educational of students. We don't have the schools. We're going to add another 600, I, I mean, students, but you've got all those subdivisions now that's going to add that many more schools, and that's not counting the other subdivisions that are not complete yet, that are still being developed. We don't have schools for those kids. So, in my opinion, we have not sat down and thought about what kind of pressure this will put on the community, nor have we put in the infrastructure, in my opinion, to, to support the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next person, come on up. Sir in the red checker, did you want to talk? No? All right. Mr. Murray.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Glenn Murray, 16550 East 116th Court. A couple of issues, or several things here. Columbine Ranches actually was 1974, so it's been there for a while. In order to put a house like that, the lot size has to be a minimum of two and a half acres or more. So, those, just to clarify the facts on that, the, the concern, development's going to happen eventually, and, and, and my concern is to make the development compatible. There's been issues in the past, a lot of places, including in Commerce City, where, where the kind of development took place and there was issues. And, and what I mean by the compatibility is, is in Columbine Ranches, there's a number of properties that are going to have multiple, multiple lots backed up to them, and, and for that reason, I would like to see some kind of a consistent fencing, probably something like a six-foot fence, a nice-looking fence that's consistent along the north as well as on the west side. I think that, that's important to happen. The, the other issue that, that I've seen on there is the, the property for the last couple of years, really, particularly the last year, has been ignored as far as maintenance. The weed issue is pretty significant out there, and the fire danger is, is there if something, if something does happen. The other thing to consider is because it was talked about a little bit, is the diversity in Columbine Ranches, there's a number of people have livestock, and that livestock's going to right, back right up to the, the new development, and that's another important reason to have that division, this fence, where the neighbors can get along, that, and it may, this may be like we talked about tonight, maybe the, the schools aren't the issue to talk about here tonight, well, maybe this isn't either, but this is something that sure needs to be considered when that development takes place. If it's going to happen, let's just make it such that we can live with what takes place and makes it compatible for all of us. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we're going to start on this side of the aisle way. Raise your hand if you have, if you want to make comment. All right? In the front row or the, the frontist row? Come on up.
Delilah Collins, 9830 Jasper Street, I'm at the north. I know this is, the conversation is not about the schools, but one of the things that I want to possibly throw out there is when you do have conversations with the school district in regards to the number of schools they're planning on building, please keep in mind that they need to be thinking about the size of the school. I think our issue is that the size of the schools that they built are too small, they weren't thinking for future growth. And so, if they have this bond money that they've gotten, they need to really start considering the size of the school in order to meet the demand and meet the growth that we have in our community. So, conversations about development should really also, in tandem, include the size of the school. So, if that's the, the direction of council, is to kind of back off and then have a conversation with the district, you may want to consider making that an option or something that they can think about with that new funding, in addition to the new marijuana funding for buildings, so that's also coming, so they, they possibly may be able to make their schools bigger in order to keep up with the demand in the neighborhood. I definitely, I do not want to, you know, freeze any type of growth because growth is, is important and those rooftops generate tax dollars, which generates funds for those schools. So, if there's any way that when you do have those conversations, you think about the size of the school, that would be helpful. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next person?
Good evening. Donald Renkin, 11598 Lewistown Street. I just wanted to, I, I'm an old school, commerce city guy. I, clearly not as educated as these gentlemen. I don't understand how you throw out a PUD and one part of it expires with the school and then everything else can just go forward. It's a little, something I don't understand myself. As we talk about the, the difference in between the properties and the, how they're going to generate different property sizes between our properties and the others, I would ask that we have a consistent, just easement between the properties, because I know around most of the property or in Columbine Ranches, and I agree with Glenn, it's going to happen and, and I can appreciate that. But I know most of the property gets a good easement of about 20 feet for drainage and such, and all the houses behind my house, which gives me seven brand-new neighbors, are right on my property line, so I just ask if we can do something with some easements consistent around the entire property, and thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Next person? Good evening.
Good evening. Susan Renkin, 11598 Lewistown Street. I agree with what my husband said regarding the easement that goes around, and originally, I know that the 20-foot that was put around was due to some drainage issues, and that is around all of Columbine Ranches except for our property and the property next door. And my concern regarding that is, is the, as you guys put up a fence or whatever is between the two properties, that if the rest of that fence is HOA maintained by the other subdivision, that then it being right up against our property and our next-door neighbor's the, the edge, the side edge of his property, that, then we would be required to maintain that because there is no public right-of-way for the, the fence to be maintained, and my concern is the consistency along that, and that, that 20-foot, even though it was originally intended as a drainage for most of the rest of the development, that it should be contiguous throughout the entire development to keep a continuity of the fence and the way that it's maintained and the way that it's taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next person? Is there anyone else that wishes to testify? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing and ask the council if they'd like to discuss. Yes, sir?
Mark Bush, 905 West 124th.
All right. Now, I just need to remind the council that the hearing's been closed. We're not taking any new testimony. So, Mark, go ahead.
No, I was just going to state that we're really, we're sensitive about that border treatment between our property and Columbine Ranches. We're working through fence design, it's going to be handled, it's not going to be, you know, no fencing going on in the back of the houses there, and the fences will be maintained by the homeowners, and there'll be HOA maintenance or Metro District maintenance and those drainage tracks, it'll be well taken care of.
Right. And well, and after the, the last young lady came up and spoke, my thought is, you know what, whoever's property that fence is on is who is responsible for the maintenance.
That's exactly right. And, and just in terms of 112th also too, it's really kind of risen to the top of, of kind of regional cooperation that we're doing out there. There's a bit of a task force that's getting formed with Public Works and Shay and ourselves to address 112th and, and figure out a path to getting that thing improved.
Well, and not part of this hearing, but you're right, 112th, given that Shay's going to be dumping a bunch of their residential onto it, the city is aware that we need improvements on 112th sooner than later.
Yeah, we'll be partners in it with you guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. The hearing's closed. I want to talk about discussion, and I do think there needs to be a little bit of discussion. First of all, I need to make sure, talking to the city attorney, I did have contact from a resident in Columbine Ranches early, prior to the decision for this to come back before the council, and discussion was, you know, her concern about views and things of that nature. I need to disclose that to the council. I also, after that conversation, Mr. Bush contacted me with concerns about what happens, you know, I've already got my approvals, and why do I have to go through this process? So, I sent him and the other lady back to Planning Department, and then I was contacted again by Mr. Bush, and I said, hey, it looks like this is going to go to a public hearing. I need to not take testimony outside of a public hearing. So, I refrained from having any discussion. I needed to disclose that. I also, this past year, my son, I helped him with a mowing project on some parcels that Mr. Bush owns, not these filings, but we mowed a little bit of property, and I needed to make sure everybody knew that before I voted on this. Mr. Galen?
Having, having heard that and, and you having disclosed that, I've got a crucial question to ask you, and that has to do with, are you in a position to render a fair and impartial decision based upon the evidence in this case and not be biased one way or the other in rendering that decision?
Yes.
All right. Then I don't think you need to be disqualified from voting. You made a disclosure and that's the proper thing to do, and the question you, you answered for me satisfies me from a legal point of view that you can proceed to engage in discussion and to vote on this issue.
Okay, and then I would ask if any council members have any concerns with me participating in the vote on this matter after my disclosure? Yep, Mr. McLeDany?
I, I want to, in the spirit of transparency as well, I worked with Mr. Bush to advocate for his contribution as one of the developer supporters of the recent school bond campaign, and in liaising with Mr. Bush, was able to help secure a, a contribution to the successful campaign. So, in, in that spirit of transparency, I was advocating on behalf of a school bond measure. I don't see that specific conversation having a, an impact on my ability to see this matter impartially, but I will defer to the city attorney to...
Okay, in that regard, then also, based upon the evidence in this case, you feel that your contact with Mr. Bush have any effect upon your ability to render a fair and impartial decision based upon the evidence presented?
I, I will just reiterate that I was very careful in conversation. In fact, I know Mr. Bush had asked to, to meet, just to, to catch up, and I, knowing that these, these were conversations that were likely to occur, we've not had any conversations on the subject property, so I am, I'm comfortable weighing objectively the, the information that we've heard in testimony tonight.
All right. Any other disclosures? Any disclosures, Steve?
Yes. I also like to disclose that I spoke to several residents in the Columbine Ranch, and I also directed them to Steve Thames and Chris Kramer as far as what the procedures are, how to, how the hearings going to be, take place and all, so I just want to make sure that that's disclosed as well.
Based upon that disclosure, are you able to answer the question that I've asked Councilman Member McLeDany and Mayor Ford that you can render a fair and impartial decision in this case based on the evidence you heard?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other disclosures before I move on? All right. I want to go into discussion. I think there is a little discussion needs to be had. I will start off. When it comes to the school district and development, I think it's important that everybody understand that school district 27J goes into multiple communities, Thornton, Brighton, Commerce City, and a lot of unincorporated areas. If we were to, based on school numbers of, of what the schools can handle... If we were to, based on school numbers of what the schools can handle, if that district was in trouble to the point where they couldn't take any more students, I think we would stop growth in all of those communities, not just Commerce City. It would be us going back and taking a relook at Shay Homes and some of our other developments and if we would let them proceed. The other thing that I think needs to be made clear is, these zonings and plots were done back before 2000 and then reverted again in 2001, therefore giving property rights to Mr. Bush and his company. So not to take anything away from anybody, but I am a huge property rights person, and I know Mr. Murray understands that I'm a huge property rights person. I would tell you that I will be supportive of this development. However, I will also tell you I will be supportive that you get the proper type of fencing, you get the proper type of relationship with the developer that abuts your properties. Is there any other discussion that anybody would like to have? Mr. McElhany.
Thank you. I wanted to kiltail the comments on the school question. There were some questions about planning. We heard from Ms. Collins about school size. Speaking as somebody that has followed very closely, the question about school capacity and obviously the recent bonded initiative, I wanna make clear that when we talk about school capacity, the concern is not in the near term, right? With this property, the ability to build a building on this property. The bond initiative that just passed adds capacity district-wide. And that capacity is, those capacity projections, those growth projections are based on, and make sure folks can hear, I'm sorry if I'm not talking into the mic. The projections that the district uses, just for context sake, taking into account all platted, planned property. So when this property was initially brought through the PUD process and there was a sense of how much that was gonna add to the mix, right? We heard earlier in the letter from the city attorney that they contemplated a number of homes and out of that number of homes, a number of students. The district takes all of those knowns around the entire district and they use that in their projections for how many schools they need. They're able to break that down into projections of how many seats they think they're gonna need at the elementary, middle, and high school level and roughly what the distribution of those students will be around the district. Historically, the district has been accurate to a level that I would kill to be with regard to my stock portfolio, right? They have been within, literally, as little as 20 students off year-to-year on average. So they have been particularly accurate in terms of knowing what that need is. The challenge that this district has had is not the number of kids or the number and location of facilities, but the fact that they haven't had the dollars to build those facilities. That's the position that we've been in. So the district has a long-range planning committee. That is something that is open to the public. If there's an interest in somebody participating in that, again, that's a district-wide function. So just because you live in Columbine Ranches doesn't mean that you're not a party to School District 27J, which spans well east and well west of where you might live. All of that is to say, this spot is contemplated as a school site for future use. So as all of the little pieces fill in in the area and the schools that are there today and gonna be there in the near future, over time, the need exists to have schools in these different places that our Planning Department works with the development community to placehold, right? So they think about where are all the ultimate spots that a school needs to go and of what size. And if you were to look at the planning and zoning maps of the city, you'd see these little school spots, right? All over the map that contemplate placeholders for high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, and they're all planned out, at least in the case of our community, to contemplate where those future spots are gonna go. So the bond that just passed is intended to address the capacity needs for roughly the next eight years, right? If we use rough math. So based on all the projections the district has and where we're gonna be at with student capacity up to that point and slightly beyond, the buildings that are now planned and the improvements that are coming forward will address the growth that these two filings, right? It already plans on addressing seats for these kids, right? Is where I'm getting to. In terms of building size, I encourage Ms. Collins to take that question to the district specifically. They have a lot of reasons for why they don't build bigger schools or smaller schools, why that's the right-size school historically for them, where some other communities in other states build mega schools, if you will. I can tell you that there's a lot of conversation around what is the right kind of school and the right size of school, especially as technology changes, but that's a conversation for a school district liaison to take on. I was glad to hear the comments from Mr. Bush around the coalition that is taking shape to address 112th. I know, just for the community's benefit, as we talk about the work that we're gonna be doing west of Chambers in regard to the Future Rec Center and the improvements that our taxpayers approved with the measure a couple of years ago that will address 112th from Chambers to Highway 2. We had a lot of conversations also about what the character that entire corridor needed to be. So we're thinking as well around what has to happen west of that and how that all ties together, so we don't think about these things in isolation. The challenge is, I think we heard in some of the comments a couple of times, is sometimes things happen in an order that isn't ideal. So you've gotta figure out how to deal with those, sort of the cards as they're dealt. So it's good to hear that the development community and the, our planners are looking at how to address the 112th corridor. And obviously, approval of this subdivision tonight doesn't mean that we're gonna have homes next summer, right? There is a lead time, and I would actually defer to Mr. Kearns or if we can get an extra answer from the, from our developer in terms of when might we start to see homes show up on this? I think that's a helpful fact in terms of the overall timeline here. Can we get a clarification on that?
Mr. Bush, you wanna come back up to the podium? When do you anticipate homes to start going vertical on these properties?
We, our phasing plan is to develop off of 120th down on High Plains Parkway down to what we call filing six, so the northern side first, filing seven. My best guess would be, all things remaining equal in the market, maybe 2017, maybe 2018.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Douglas.
Are we getting here? What was the name?
Uh, Mr. Bush, you wanna get back up and restate that so that they can hear you in the microphone? It's all.
Our phasing plan right now is to develop south off of 120th, so it would actually be what we call our filing three and our filing six, which is on the northern side of Columbine Ranches. And filing seven at the access, the primary access of 112th. All things remaining equal in the marketplace, my best guess is probably 2017, 2018. But we should have activity out there in 2016 on filing three and filing six.
All right, thank you. Did everybody hear that? All right. Mr. Douglas.
Yeah, thank you. Jason Salauz was gonna say about the 112th impact in Chambers. And as far as going up to 112th Tower, I know the city is working with Shay, and that back road right there is really bumpy. So if any way we can work with the county as well and grade that, so people will be able to drive and not lose their teeth would be great. And just on the timeline, as far as working with the residents in Columbine Ranch and making sure they're up to speed on what we're doing as far as the timeline goes would be great. And then when other considerations are coming up, far as hearings on what type aesthetics are gonna be as far as the fence and all that, make sure that the folks in Columbine Ranch are notified so they can request a hearing if they need to. Just make sure things stay as what we were talking about tonight and things are consistent.
All right. Seeing no one else.
Can I get up, comment?
No, I'm sorry, the hearing's closed, sir.
You can have Miller get up three times. Just so you know, you have Miller get up three times.
And I clarified that that was outside of the public hearing and it was information that would benefit you all on timing, questions that were brought up from the council. So I made sure everybody got a chance to get up during the hearing. I'm open for a motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Mr. McElhany.
So moved.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion to second to adopt the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now I'm open for a motion to approve Resolution 2015-112. Mr. Bullock.
So moved.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
All right, I'll ask the city attorney to read the title.
Title reads, Resolution Approving Subdivision Platte in Case S 428-04-15.
Thank you. Have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission concerning Resolution 2015-111. Mr. McElhany.
So moved.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion approving Resolution 2015-111. Mr. McElhany.
So moved.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion to second with the city attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, Resolution Approving Subdivision Platte in Case S 426-04-15.
Thank you. Title's been read. I have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2015-87. I'd ask Deputy City Manager Hayes to make this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a few quick slides to go over this resolution that's before you tonight. Mr. Zyliss, our water council is going to be here. I gave him a reprieve, given the weather coming in from Boulder, so I hope I can answer any of your technical questions that you've got tonight. Just a quick current status of the Prospect Valley ERUs. This goes back to an IGA that was between the PV Metro District, the city, and South Adams Water and Sanitation District back in 2006. And we're gonna be requesting an amendment to that IGA tonight. South Adams actually owns the water rights, as you see there, 1,266 acre-feet. The PV Metro District owned then the right to sell the ERU water connections, which at that time was 4,775 ERUs. The agreement states that all the PV ERUs need to be used on properties that are annexed into the city and included in the South Adams Water and Sanitation District. After a series of purchases from some of the developers, there was a default on the obligations to buy those ERUs. The city exercised some of the options and currently owns 458.63 ERUs. There are approximately 3,608 ERUs that remain to be sold. The bondholders are left, again, with a water right, water resource that has a restricted use within our city, but they have very limited market at this point. So they do control the terms to buy and sell those rights, and they proposed holding an auction to sell the remaining ERUs. I'm gonna explain as best I can their proposal. It's what they call a Dutch auction, where they'll take a series of bids for 150 or more ERUs. The minimum price that they would take could be 8,000 per ERU. And then once they get the highest bid, that would set the market price for the ERUs for everybody else. And then there'd be no minimum for the number of ERUs that people could purchase after that point. You would need to have been an original bidder to be able to participate. However, given the market, we anticipate that there would be some leftover after the initial bidders, I guess, took their allocations and paid for them. We are not going to get into tonight what the city should bid, if any, what the district may bid, if any, or any of that type of thing. We are gonna have a executive session in January to talk about that when we discuss a variety of water issues. But I just wanna let you know that that's not imminent at this point. They're looking at all of their options. It'll probably be well into 2016 before they come to market with that auction. This part is the public information that they shared with a series of developers a couple of months ago in a meeting that was hosted by the district. And if you wanted to see the sign-in sheet, it's probably all the developers that we know that have done business in Commerce City, because again, they have a limited market. They can only be purchased in our city. So we have an amendment to the IGA that we're proposing to, if you will, free up this a little bit more so that it can be used a little more widespread throughout the city. The first one is some of these city benefits. It would allow small water users in the general service area as well as Prairie Gateway, which is the Cronky property. Those were excluded from the original agreement. It would allow them to actually purchase some of these water rights in the future. Also, we've added these criteria, which are the same as what we approved in the implementation agreement back in 2014 for the Freiko ERUs, that if you have less than an acre or use four ERUs or less, where you can't annex because you're not contiguous, or you require more than our standard allocation, we would actually allow people to buy them without having to annex into the city. Again, providing some flexibility for what we know is the reality of our core city. Also, no dual systems would be required in the general service area. This is that dual-pipe irrigation system that is prevalent in the northern part of our city. There are some benefits to the district as well. We've added that South Adams County should be a purchaser of ERUs. That was not contemplated under the original agreement. We believe this is getting to one of the issues that we've had at the Water Commission. We've discussed that sometimes there are small users that either are not afforded the ERUs from the property owner that they buy the land from, or they just need a small amount to be able to facilitate their development. The district is not in a position to sell ERUs at this point. And so this would give them the opportunity to participate in the auction if they chose to and then have a small number of ERUs they could actually sell to people when they came to get their tap and they didn't have enough water rights. Secondly, the PV successors in the signs would be given an extension until 2016 to convey easements and the facilities parcel. This is essentially the well field. They were supposed to dedicate that prior years, and this would give them until the end of 2016 to do so. So with that, we recommend approval of the amendment to the IGA, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions at this time for staff? Mr. McElhany?
I'll just add, I don't think we heard it in Mr. Hayes' comments, but this is a really good thing. You know, we talk a lot about, have talked a lot about the challenges of water in the community and we've heard, you know, we've heard various comments over time about the difficulty that the lack of water has. We've certainly talked about a number of our own projects that have had a water component to them. I think the key conversation at the Water Commission has just been, and this is, I think, where you did use, the flexibility that this introduces that hasn't been there before. So I don't know that there's a downside, per se, to this that I can, that I can think of, just to make clear that there's nothing more, there's nothing more to it. This is, this is pretty much straightforward, good stuff.
I concur. That's why we're recommending this. And I would note that the district board, South Adams did approve this Thursday night, as well as the PV District Board has approved it. So we think it's a good partnership between all three of us. Again, this asset is tied up right now, and it's a way to help get it out into the market and get more people able to use it.
If I can just add one more comment. I think the, your last two comment, or comment is really key, right? This is really the first evidence of, or most recent evidence of this improving, ever-improving collaboration and dialogue that's exist, that is now in place between the city and the district, not just at staff level, but at board and council level. And to bring PV into the mix in this constructive way is more good evidence of those improving relations, so.
I would have to agree. I think it's great that we're getting more ERUs out into the market. Right now, the ERUs that are, that are held, are being held close to the vest, reducing the opportunity for economic development. So I think it's great, a great way to get these back out into the market and allow Commerce City to have more commercial opportunity because there will be a more diversity of water rights. So thank you for bringing it forward. Seeing no one else. Is anyone in the audience, would you like to address the council regarding this resolution? Seeing no one? I'm open for a motion to approve the resolution. Mr. McElhany.
Moved to approve Resolution 2015-87.
Okay, Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion to second to approve the resolution. Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, Resolution Approving First Amendment to No Governmental Water Resources Agreement.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Then we'll move into presentations. We have the Quality Community Foundation follow-up. I would like to invite Finance Director Cheryl Carstens forward to make the presentation. I would like to invite Finance Director Cheryl Carstens forward to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I am here tonight to continue the discussions we started earlier this year about the Quality Community Foundation and the grant process. This is the second time I will present information to you. After the 2015 grant process, we know that there were some concerns and questions raised about the process and how the recipients were awarded the funds. So in June, I presented information to you at the study session, which really just was an outline of the history of the QCF, kind of a reset to let you know how we had gotten to that point with the foundation. Tonight, the purpose really is to talk more specifically about the grant process. We are getting ready to start the 2016 process, and based on the input that we have received and the comments that we obtained from you earlier, we have already started talking as a board at our monthly meetings to incorporate some changes in that process. We will outline those for you tonight. But in addition to that, the added purpose is to ask you what your goals are for this program. The QCF Board certainly understands that the responsibility lies with them to review those grant applications and make those awards, but we want to make sure that we're aligning the QCF Board efforts with the goals of City Council for this program. The Quality Community Foundation was established in 2006. It was organized to support and obtain funding for post-secondary education and youth recreation program scholarships. In addition, they were organized to provide grant funds to various nonprofits programs which benefit the public. I have included for you a list of our board members. We currently have eight board members. We are also supported by LeAnn Noel from my team. She provides administrative support to us. The QCF Grant Program provides nonprofit organizations with funding to benefit Commerce City residents. We did, we know that some of the comments or concerns were that the programs that were awarded may not be supporting just Commerce City residents. And what I want to make sure you are aware is that while their service, their programs do serve a broader footprint, we do specifically ask them during the grant process to identify the residents in our community that will be getting the program. So that is something that is very important to the board, and we do try to get a clear answer to that question. The QCF nonprofit grant process is a competitive process. A recap of the 2015 funds, we did have 120,000 available to you. The QCF wants to thank you for your continued support in that funding. Without that, this program would not be possible. We did receive 45 applications from 33 organizations. Some of them submitted multiple applications. The 2015 funds requested were just over 268,000. We did fund the full 120,000 to 39 of the 45 requests that we did receive. We just wrapped up the 2016 budget process, and in your budget, you did authorize the continued funding of $120,000 for the 2016 process. This slide is just letting you know the types of recipients. We broke it down by the six categories and provided just a five-year snapshot of the funds offered to recipients in those categories. And then, on the next slide, we did provide the actual names of the organizations that fall within those categories for your reference. Now, I'll talk more specifically about the application process, and I'll point out some of the changes that the QCF Board has already planned to incorporate. This is a timeline of what's happening. So for 2015, you can see, and I apologize, it says November 23rd. We have moved this presentation around on your schedule a little bit over the last few weeks, so I apologize, that is not correct. But we are doing this presentation to you tonight, and then in November and December, we will be finalizing the application itself. I did include that as an attachment in your packet for your review that is a draft. The QCF Board does meet tomorrow night and again in December, and they will be making any final changes to that application process, but we have it almost finalized. The application does break it down into three different sections with points assigned so that when the board is looking through it, we do go through and do scoring. And you can see how the sections are divided into that 100 points that we allow. Then it breaks out the timeline for 2016. The items in red are new to the process. So in early January, we will do the notification to the potential applicants, and that gives them the announcement that the process is coming up and what the timeline and the training is going to be. The end of January, we are going to require a mandatory pre-application meeting. We'll offer that twice, one time in the morning, one time in the afternoon. The last couple of years, that has not been a mandatory attendance, and we think because there are some things changing, it's important for them to come and be a part of that process and hear those changes so they can fill out their applications appropriately. January 31st is when all of our 2015 recipients have to have their annual reports submitted to the QCF Board. And then, on February 1st, the application will open. During the intake process, it is an online process. They have a pre-application review. The proposals are reviewed by LeAnn Noel, our administrative support for completeness. She does notify them if anything is incomplete prior to the deadline, allowing them to make those changes. That is one thing that I think sets us apart for anybody that has any familiarity with applying for grants. That's usually a very set process. Usually, they do not help you do that, and sometimes they can get very detailed in the requirements that you have to put forth. And if you miss any of the dotting, the i's crossing, the t's, then your application is not considered. We make every effort to help them be successful in submitting a complete application to us. February 16th, the QCF Board is going to meet. This is a new process we are going to go through. We are going to do an application review and a scoring training session to make sure that all board members are on the same page, and we are using the same criteria to do the review and the scoring of each of those sections. That's something that I think will be very helpful. So we will take an application likely from the 2015 process and go through. That way, we can see if anybody is really on opposite ends of the spectrum when they're reviewing certain sections and make sure that we're all doing it consistently. March 4th is when the intake process will end. A review of all of the applications for completeness will be done by our administrative assistant, and then those applications will be forwarded to the board members. The board members then will have approximately two weeks to go through and review those proposals and score them prior to showing up to the March meeting to have the discussion and a review of the scoring. One of the other comments that we did receive is that perhaps applicants did not have enough time to get through the application process, so this gives them a little over a month, which is a couple of additional weeks from the last prop, the last process, the timeline that they had in the 2015 process. So it gives them a few more weeks to complete this work. This also gives the QCF Board a little bit more time to go through and review all of those applications received. And then, on March 22nd, when the board reviews the applications, they'll make the determination, and that information will be brought back to you the end of March, again, at a study session to let you know those award determinations. We will notify applicants of the award. Something that we haven't done in the past is they've received the notification at the same time that they're told to come for the check distribution, so we want to add a little bit of time in there, so hopefully, they will be able to work it into their schedules to come and receive that check and be a part of the meeting. And the check distribution would happen on April 18th, which is about a month later than they receive checks this year. To be eligible, applicants must be a nonprofit organization and provide proof of 501 status. Something new that the board is going to ask them is to provide a current letter of determination. Some of the letters we've received with the applications are very old. From that information, it is very hard for the QCF Board to know that they are in good standing, so we're asking them to provide us some current information. Their activities must benefit Commerce City residents. They must submit the application on the format that we've identified. We're also changing, and we're asking that all organizations only present one proposal. They may have multiple programs. We're asking that, them to include that on one application, and we're putting a maximum on that application. We have limited funds. They're all worthy programs and great, great things for our residents, but there just aren't enough funds, so this will, I think, help with that process and give more people an opportunity to be a part of the awards. And then, their grant report for the previous year, again, will have to be submitted by January 16th, or January 31st of 16 in order for them to be eligible for the 2016 process. They are ineligible if they do not show that, the proof of the nonprofit status, if their application is late, or if they're missing sections. But again, I want to remind you, we make every effort to reach out them, out to them to let them know that something was missing, and they, you know, need to get that in by the deadline. If they, if the applicant does leave out information, then that would be scored accordingly. Ineligible activities are salaries, benefits, rent, utilities, and individuals. So those are the steps in the process that we've identified. At this time, I'll answer any questions, but please keep in mind that, you know, one of the main purposes of tonight was really to find out what your goals are for this program, and if, based on the information I've presented, you feel like we are aligning our efforts with the goals that you have for the program. And we would appreciate any feedback that you have for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does the council have questions or comments? Mr. Amador?
Could we go to the slide where it has your timeline, the 2016 timeline?
Mm-hmm.
There we go. I think that we stated in here that there was, anything in red was something that was changed, and so on the January 26th, I believe, what I heard you say is that it's now a mandatory, and so would mandatory be considered red in this?
Technically, yes. I mean, the board, like I said, they're going to meet tomorrow night and in December, and we have not voted on that mandatory, but it is something that we have talked about. So we didn't put it in red because the decision hasn't been made, but that's something that we feel will not only benefit the process and help us in our efforts, but also benefit the applicant to go through, step by step, through that application and, and what the new parts of the process are.
And then, on moving down the schedule, on the March 4th intake process ends, review application for completeness by administrative assistant. That March 4th is a Friday, and so if we say March 8th is the applications distributed to board members, that would leave the 5th and the 6th as Saturday and Sunday, when I would imagine most people aren't going to work. And so, that leaves the 7th and the 8th one day to correct your application. Is that right?
Well, that's a good question, but keep in mind, people are submitting throughout the entire process. So as they come in, that review is done, so it's not like we, not, LeAnn does not wait until that final day to get them. So we do have a lot of them that are turned in by, you know, a week after we open it up. So likely, there's one or two, maybe a handful, to get through to do the review. And as she gets them, she's going through that, through them, so that she can contact, contact them and say, you know, "On section two, you missed this piece, you know, please submit that information by this time." So, you know, with the example that I gave you of having 45 applications, she didn't wait and have to do that. I don't make her work on Saturdays and Sundays to get that done. So she's going through that process each day as they're received.
Okay. And then, as far as what, at least some of the wishes of council are, I know that last year, there may have been some glitches in the software, or the characters, or what that looked like from telling someone that their application was incorrect or duplicated, or maybe the software locked up after they hit submit, so they weren't even aware that anything happened. So I think there was a communication gap that happened possibly last year. So I definitely just want to make sure that if we're having those issues, that at least we can look at that to be proactive on that.
That's a great comment. Thank you. I know that early in the process, we did receive some phone calls that they, the, you know, boxes on the application were not allowing enough characters for people to be able to provide their information, and those types of things were addressed immediately. Certainly, if there's something like that that happens that is our error, and it's something that we're not going to overcome, then we're going to do everything we can to work with them and get their information, even if that means they fax it in or email it in. I mean, we, you know, we aren't going to hold them responsible for something they had no control over.
Very good. And then, on the application itself, I was just kind of looking through this. I would imagine that we may want to modify this somewhere in the body of this thing that says, "If you're having technical difficulties, contact X person," just so that we don't get backwards possibly how we did before, because I don't see that particular piece of information, and that may be in the pre-mandatory application process. But that was a couple of the things that I just wanted a little bit of clarification. And I think you did touch base on, there are organizations that are outside of Commerce City. However, you know, they are providing services in Commerce City and what that looks like. So I would imagine that in the scoring criteria as well, that we're looking, weighing the pros and cons and the benefits to the greatest extent possible, the services that are being provided to the residents of Commerce City because of the sponsorship of funding. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Yes, thank you for coming tonight with this presentation. It looks like you're doing a good job being proactive this year. Like I said, we did have a lot of conversations last year, and hopefully, this year, we'll get that all worked out, and if we do have some problems, we'll, we'll address them then. Well, thank you very much.
Mr. McAdonnie?
Thank you. Page nine, eligibility. Obviously, we're highlighting the 501(c), or the 501 status, and I know you've just noted that the letter of determination is the new piece here. I'm trying to think about past awards where we have school groups or otherwise, like a PTO. The PTO themselves isn't a 501, but is that, does the process contemplate that, and are they using the school's overall status, or how does that work? Or does the process now not, with this letter of determination, et cetera, allow for that to happen?
Well, based on the information that we've received in the past, it sometimes is hard to get to the answer of that question. I will tell you, in the two years that I have participated, they have used, in that example, the school umbrella of the 501, and the QCF Board has not made a determination that that isn't appropriate.
Okay.
Again, you know, they're providing great programs to our residents, and while it is a competitive process, and we want them to follow the rules and be accountable, just like, you know, the next person was, you know, we do want them to be able to get through the process and be eligible for that funding. So I can't think of an example where a situation has come up where we were uncertain if they had their own 501 or under the umbrella. We would do that due diligence prior to making any determination, but it's a good point.
Okay. I guess, part of the question, and I know we've made it work in the past, I guess, the part of the question is, do, do groups like that see these criteria and disallow themselves because they know, "Hey, I'm, you know, such and such PTO, and we, as a PTO, aren't a 501." They don't even come down that path.
Yeah.
And so, that fine line of how widely do you open this up or, or not?
Yeah. I have not heard that. I certainly can take that question back to the QCF Board to see if anybody else has received any comment like that, so that it is something that we can certainly have a discussion about and consider if we need to. I know that last year, there was one person that expressed interest in participating but did not have a 501, and we let him know that that would make him ineligible and therefore did not apply. But I don't think he had an umbrella organization that he could have worked under either, or at least he didn't make that known to us at the time.
Hey, thank you.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilman Douglas.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. So this, this revised application is actually, the actual application for 2016, right? Just been revised?
It is still in draft because the board has to meet one more time to see if anybody else has additional comments or, you know, items to change, and then we'll vote to finalize that. But yes, I believe that's close to the final product.
Okay. So each one of these sections here shows 1,500 characters, and if they need more, more room, can you add additional sheet with that?
They cannot.
No? That's it? Okay, just had to modify what they have, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I know last year, just take for instance, Adams 14 had three grant applications, so with this going forward, it's just going to be one per each applicant, correct?
Correct. So they would submit one application, and they could identify on that application that they're going to use the funding for three programs. But we don't, what, what we're trying to get them away from doing is submitting every application with a request of 70. application with a request of seventy-five hundred.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. And actually, that just answered my question. Myself and Councilmember Amador had attended a meeting last week at Adam City Middle School, and we had reiterated the fact that it was, it was very important to definitely communicate as they're applying for these grants. And just looking at the timeline, it looks like it's a little more, well, it's definitely more detailed, but that was one question, I think, that maybe because they had submitted numerous applications, and it was just a matter of missing that key piece of communication. So I just want to thank you for this, and, and again, reiterated that they really need to, to communicate if they have any questions, and not just assume and just push it through the process. So, thank you.
All right. Seeing no more further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is administrative council business. Is there any administrative council business? Seeing none. Mr. McRoom, do you have any administrative council business?
Sure.
All right. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I have one. There you go. Let's see. Where am I at here? Question I had was, I know recently, Bison, Bison, I mean Buffalo Run approved the lighting in the parking lot, but those, the pole heights are very low. And so as far as the output of, of light was not what I thought it would be, we had discussion back in summertime, what was approved. I did ask about the height, and they said, oh yeah, it's going to be adequate height. It's a little higher than the black original poles, but it's not high enough to resonate enough lighting as far as broadcasting that light. They are LED lights, so they are brighter, but there's still a lot of shadows out there in big pools. So I wonder if that could be something, since they were just put in, if, what it would take to heighten those pole, I mean, put new poles in a lot higher, and to provide more And then I also have a, a, this is more, well, yes, a request, there's a request that there's a grove house up in the northern range, and I will be giving that address to Chief Troy Smith. And everyone in front of you, you have these WTI books, the aquatic recreation, and I know that they were one of the participants that were going to be looked at as far as indoor aquatics. And if you turn to page seven, it shows indoor aquatics and their design. And if council could get, I know we have someone who's going to look at what would work in there based on the size of our facilities, but what are some of the choices coming in front of us, if there's an opportunity for us to know that, to, to see if they're looking at a, a pool that has diving boards, or is this going to be straight swimming? Just keep in mind, because we need to let the residents know exactly what this design team is looking at, and if there's any time, because this is all design, if there's any, at any time, if there's any, talk with public or the council on which direction they're going with those, those aesthetics inside the facility. Would be greatly appreciated. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. Mr. McAdonick?
Thank you. Obviously, we have the light that's going in at Potomac and Hundred and Fourth, and that was the result of community concerns, and obviously, a study done to determine whether or not there was a warrant for placing a light at that intersection. We've had a number of folks ask about Ninety-Sixth and Chambers, and I know we've obviously done a number of things over, really, the last year alone, in terms of the speed zone, and I believe we did a community meeting, and we've done the flashing crosswalk, et cetera. It was brought to my attention that there was a motor vehicle accident there, I believe on Friday, sometime within the last number of days. And I, I don't know if I got the, the fact, the factual story, if that was, coincidentally, there was a transformer issue, or if the car actually hit the transformer box. There's a, one of the big green boxes there on the corner, but I've seen the picture, and it looked like they were part of the same event. Bottom line, lots of concerns and comments around, it's time for a light. And I have said, I don't know if it's time for a light based on warrant. So I know we didn't talk about that intersection in terms of lighting in our recent budget discussions, and studies cost, as does the ultimate improvements, but I would like to get council's support for having staff explore, doing a study at that intersection to see if, if we're at a point where warrants make sense, especially with the improvements to Ninety-Sixth Avenue. We've changed the entire, you know, character of that corridor, and I think, you know, even though we had a ton of traffic going up Buckley and Eighty-Eighth, I think it's changed now that it's, it's a straight shot, and it's a lighted intersection, et cetera. So to not have any break between Tower and Ninety-Sixth seems like a long stretch, especially with the choke-down that happens at that specific intersection. And you've got traffic that's coming at a higher rate of speed in either direction, and you've got all of the blind spots. We know the things that are there, but ultimately, you know, in advance of the ultimate improvements on Ninety-Sixth, it seems like it might be time for us to look at better traffic control. Any concerns?
Absolutely. I'm looking for a consensus on the staff, looking into whether a study needs to be done now on Ninety-Sixth and Chambers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. So you got your consensus?
Thanks. I'm just going to make a motion to that effect, but that's okay.
It's all right. We got it. Mr. Amador?
Thank you. So on November twelfth, there was an email that went out regarding the holiday party for December tenth, encouraging all city employees to attend. The holiday party moved to, moved to daytime hours activities, and there was a, an email that went back to the employees that sent the email requesting that the court employees actually have court that day, and so they're unable to attend. And from what I gathered, the email went on deaf ears, that no one ever responded back to if the same food could be provided to the court employees, since it's mandatory that they have to work. So I'd like to see if something can be done, at least for the plus or minus ten employees that have to work that day. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Douglas again?
Couple more things. You have a drive down Ninety-Sixth, going east and west on, on, from Chambers up to Tower, and it's really dark out there. And I know without having to put in, tap into any kind of electricity or so, if we could look at maybe putting a few lights out there that are solar powered for right now, not have to be tied to the grid, but something that, that can, can provide lighting out there, because it's really dark up in that corridor. And it's not like you get past, or the speed limit's still thirty, it, I believe it's raised up to forty or forty-five. And then I know that at Revere and Hundred and Fourth, they're supposed to install blinking lights and E four, I mean, E four seventy. RTD is going to pay for half of that. If there, any way we could look at, I know we just approved this little study about installing, what, what that cost to install a traffic light at that intersection, because it is extremely dangerous. And that blinking light, that is a temporary fix, or, but it's a much wider width to cross than it is at Potomac and Hundred and Fourth. And I think that's just putting a, a Band-Aid on the problem, and that's, to me, wasted funds, even though it's thirty-nine thousand dollars, that's still not, you know, that's still significant funds.
Let us do a little bit of research on what it would cost to do a full warrant study there. It's not just the cost of the signal, it's would it meet warrants?
Right.
There may not be sufficient traffic there yet to warrant a signal. Maybe that's a better course of action. Let us get some initial information back, and then council can decide if you'd like to direct us to do that.
Okay. Because that development on the corner is going to put more, more homes and more cars going through that intersection in the next two or three years. Thank you.
Councilman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, to, to add to that, I know that I was a strong proponent of the crosswalk in that particular area, and then in addition with RTD increasing their bus, bus route service for the, the one oh four X, but that has been a concern. In fact, I got a lot of questions as far as, well, why do they get a stoplight down the road when, you know, we have severe traffic issues here with people trying to cross that busy street? So I will actually add to Councilmember Douglas's request that I would like to see that as well. In addition to, and I guess it's a matter of how that crosswalk would work in collaboration with that, or if that even can be pushed aside and just have a light. I'm not, I'm not certain how that would work with those dynamics, but that's one thing. Also, just to, to follow up on a request, speeding along Ninety-Ninth Avenue near Second Creek Elementary, this was something that I had discussed with several residents while I was out and about in the community. And at different times when I was out there, I would just kind of park down the street, and I would notice, you know, maybe not so much every other car, but say, one out of four cars, three of them would definitely speed up as soon as they got out of that school zone, just to come to an immediate stop, to turn, to get out of the subdivision. So I just wanted to get some follow-up on that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Carson?
Part of this is for clarification. I don't know how to go about presenting to get council to support a resolution. Ms. Elliott and I spent Saturday with the, the retreat for cultural council, and there we had a presentation from Kathy Emo from SCFD. And then I did receive a email from a Ellen Drum, but through this presentation, it was explained to us that SCFD has a reauthorization plan that they would like to pass. That has to be done through the legislators. So they're asking, and, and the presentation was made to Crystal and I, which I would think that both of us were in support of that. So they were asking if Commerce City would support a resolution so that they could take that forward. Through this email, I also have a, a fact sheet and a sample resolution. Can I just send it to you? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, to follow up on one of the issues that Mr. Douglas raised, I would like to get a consensus of the council, that the staff be directed to look into the lack of lighting on Tower Road south of Ninety-Sixth, all the way down to Peña Boulevard, because it's dark as a, a pit. Something I brought up three and a half years ago, and I ran up underneath that tow truck parked, parked across the road. It's still just as dark as the inside of Carlsbad Caverns. And I'm surprised that somebody hadn't been killed out there so far.
Just to, just to clarify-
I thought I asked the council to do that three and a half years ago, but I didn't get much, very far. But anyway, I just want to follow up on what Mr. Douglas is saying. Something needs to be done about the lighting before the next three years, when we're going to have Tower Road finished. I don't know how much that's going to cost. Maybe we can install the lights first. I don't know, but-
I think part of the problem, Mr. Benson, is the fact that we don't have the property utilities there yet to be able to run the lights. Maybe I'm wrong, staff may correct me on that, but we're supposed to start construction of Tower Road beginning of the year, right?
Yes.
And so-
There's power out there, there are a few lights out there, but there are certain places where there is absolutely no light.
I agree.
And that's what-
I would agree, but, but coming up on a construction of Tower Road, starting next, the, the first of the year-
I understand.
I would think it's being addressed as part of the construction.
Anyway, I would ask for a consensus of the council, either we'll get it or we won't, so.
Okay. All those in favor?
Is to address the issue of the lack of lighting out there, and to try to do something about it before we actually reconstruct Tower Road, before somebody gets killed.
So I need a consensus to look into improving the lighting on Tower Road prior to the construction for safety purposes. Yes, sir?
Maybe it's best to handle it as a, as a motion. Sounds like Mr. Benson made a motion.
Okay, I need a second. All right, I have a second by Mr. Douglas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right.
I think we ought to, we ought to set a number and say that, well, once, say, five people get killed out there, then we'll do it. Or maybe after two people get killed, we'll do it.
I don't think you can add to it. No, you can't add that to your motion, Jim.
No, I'm not, I'm just making a sarcastic comment, because I don't understand why nobody's concerned about the safety of people driving on that road.
Can I make a comment?
Don't worry about it.
I will reflect my comments as to why I voted no, was because we're going into construction, and we're going to be able to, to develop that road properly with the proper lighting, and to expend funds in the short term, prior to the first of the year, when we start constructing Tower Road, I think would be a misappropriation of the residents' money. I agree. Anyone, yeah? Jason?
I, I was going to do my very best not to make any negative comment, Mr. Benson. I know your time with us is limited, but I will not miss, I, I will not miss your positioning of items like this in such a way as to infer that we are not in support of public safety. This matter-
I won't miss it either.
This matter is near and dear to all of us, and is part of the reason that we advocated for the two K project, and that we've advocated for Tower Road. And I know for a fact in multiple conversations, your personal accident was part of that discussion as a reason for making sure that the road was properly designed and properly lit. That said, the mayor is spot on, it would be irresponsible of this council, even in the interest of public safety, to try and find a way to put some number of lights on Tower Road that are going to ultimately be taken down in the very near future. I don't know that I could defend that. What's frustrating is that we haven't fixed Tower sooner, and it's as dark as it is with as much volume as it is. That is not something that this council can solve for right now. The necessary steps to fix Tower properly are in motion. Thank you.
All right. Is there any further administrative counsel to come before this city? Seeing none, we'll move into reports. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, call your attention to tonight's city manager report, a number of updates, follow-up on city council action items. In the interest of time and weather, I won't go through them. Certainly, contact me if you have questions about the updates. Two things that aren't in the city manager update that I wanted to mention. One is, I'll be on vacation next week. My family and I are headed back to Michigan for Thanksgiving this year instead of Christmas. So Mr. Hayes will be acting city manager on the short Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving holiday week. And secondly, about six or seven weeks ago, the city hired a new city engineer, Larry Hellig, and he's here tonight, listening to every word of tonight's-
All of our traffic lights and signals and crosswalks. Take note, man. That's all I can tell you. Take note.
He, he, you can't wait to fix it all for you. So say, say hello to Larry.
Hello, Larry. Welcome aboard.
Hello.
Mr. Gaylor?
I'd just like to pay a tribute to our city manager, Brian McRoom, and our chief of police. They had an all-hands meeting today that was really well-attended by the city employees. This, this room was filled, standing room only, with employees, and they spoke about the organization that we have in Commerce City, and the need to look forward to working together and to continue to work together. And even though we have difficult times, it's important to recognize that we're all a team, and that we'll do much better if we- a team, and that we'll do much better if we stay a team, and they did a great job putting forth that message.
All right, thank you. Now, I'd like to say thank you too to Troy and Brian and Michelle, and everybody that participated in the last week's worth of craziness around here. I know there's an ongoing investigation, I won't talk about it. I don't know any details to talk about it, but I know you've had your hands full, and I appreciate the time and the effort that you've been putting in over the last week. I know it's trying on both of you, but keep your heads up and keep pushing for the right things in Commerce City. All right, I'll get into my report. Area boards, first of all, I need to say, I was out of town for a while. I took my son on a hunting trip, and we had a great time. I got to thank Mayor Pro Tem Bullock for being in charge while I was out of town and running the last city council meeting. So, thank you, Mr. Bullock. You're welcome.
Thank you.
And then I know several of the council members and the city manager went to Nashville for the National League of Cities Conference. I'll let them add anything on to their reports, on to my report if they'd like. But I attended the area boards meeting, Rotary, and then I was invited as the honored person at the JROTC Marine Corps Birthday Ball that Adams 14 puts on every year. And I will tell you, I was thoroughly impressed with the program that they have built that ROTC program into. More kids, it's 200 and some kids are active in the ROTC program. The ball that they hold is very ceremonial to the birthday of the Marine Corps, and it was, was pretty amazing to see that this is coming out of District 14, the quality of a program and the respect that these kids all have. You couldn't have been at a black tie event and had it any better than what this ball was and how it was performed. So congratulations to all the ROTC students, as well as the master chief and the folks running that program. They're doing an excellent job. Then I had Rotary, had a meeting with Suncor, had a tour with the Economic Development Department, and Saturday, I was the grand marshal for parade for Bass Pro Shops over in North Fields. And I thought, oh, you know, yeah, I'll go over there and do that, you know, my wife works there, I think it'll be great. Turned out that they had the marching band from Mont Belo, they had Adams 14 marching band, they had Adams 14 Junior ROTC doing their flags. It was, it was about a five or six block parade. They had Eljabelle Shriners were there. It was for being for a store. It was pretty elaborate. They had a truck towing a boat, and Santa Claus was riding on the boat to kick off the holidays at Bass Pro. I got to ride in one of the Razors, a little four-wheeler, two-man jobs, and that was pretty awesome. We had a, it was, it was a fun thing to participate in as the mayor of Commerce City. And then I have to say thank you and congratulations to Steve Douglas, Crystal Elliott, Rick Teeter, and Paul O'Dea for winning their elections. And I also want to thank all of the candidates that didn't win their elections for participating and having a desire in helping and participating with the community that they live in. With that said, is there anyone who would like to add anything to my reports?
I do.
Councilwoman Carson.
I just want to add congratulations also to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a great team. I think that was evident by the vote. The residents retained us because of the efforts we're putting in, and look out for what these new projects are going to look like, and the fact that we get to be here to watch them be completed. So thank you to the residents for re-electing me mayor, and I hope to provide you with another good four years.
Thank you.
All right, if there be no further business to come before the city of Commerce City City Council this evening, we are adjourned. Now I will call to order the meeting of the Urban Removal Authority. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Sir Chairman Ford.
Here.